Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. It's about seven o'clock. That clock's a little bit fast. Welcome to July 1st, 2020, regular meeting. If I could have everybody please stand in the place of allegiance. We're in a moment's time. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, everyone, our first item is accept the modified agenda as presented.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Before we move on to community participation, I would like to take one moment to introduce Dr. Christopher Ballinger, our new superintendent. For those who haven't seen or met him, please say hello. Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Next item on our agenda is community participation. Do we have anybody that would like to speak?
Hello, everyone. My name is Stevie Hubbard. This is Samuel Porter. We recently founded the organization Front Royal Unites. It's a 501(c)(4) here in Front Royal. It serves Warren County and Front Royal. The reason that we've come to you today is because in the past, and I don't know how many of you are here in the future times, I mean, the past times that I had come, but we've had some racial disparities that we've experienced within the school system. Specifically, the last time I came, there were racial slurs drawn all over the school walls, and no one was really dealt with in any way, shape, or form over it, which was pretty upsetting. We also during that time began collecting data that people are feeling like they are being disproportionately punished on a basis of color and that they're not always included in better programs on bases of color. So, we are still compiling work, and we hope that we can work with you great this year. But we do want to see those changes made this year. I don't want my child to have to go to a school and see the anywhere drawn all over the walls and be made to feel like that's okay. And so, it's our hope that you will take us seriously now. We have about 2,500 members behind us, and we want to see these things finally eradicated in our school system. Thank you very much. Do you have anything else to say?
Hello, good morning. My name is Samuel Porter. I graduated from Skyline High School back in 2011. Andrew Keller was my principal. He used to say, "The choices we make today shape our work tomorrow." And so, I just want to make sure that we're all very cognizant of the climate sometimes in the environment. Not everyone's a bad person, but there are some bad people. We've just got to make sure that our students go to safe environments and don't have to worry based on what they look like on the outside. And also, welcome, sir, to our community. Look forward to working with you as well. Thank you all for everything that you do. And yeah, Front Royal Unites, together we are united, and together we are Front Royal. We appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Kim Oakland, and I am the president of the Warren County Education Association and a teacher at Reston Jeffries Elementary School. That's my musical name. And I'd just like to say on behalf of the Warren County Education Association, welcome to Dr. Ballinger, who has been chosen wisely. This is a wonderful community, and even when there have been issues, we have wonderful -- whoops, sorry. We have active community participants who are -- and I love the name Front Royal Unites. That is wonderful. And so, you have chosen wisely. We look forward to working with you. I also want to say a huge thank you to Mrs. Melanie Shepherd. She has been a source of support and has -- she handled a whole bunch of extra stuff this year with grace and aplomb. So, and the other thing that I wanted to say, Dr. Ballinger, is that we have had -- we are very fortunate in this community to have a positive relationship with the school board and with the central office, and we've worked really hard to maintain that. And as I listen to some of my colleagues around the region, I realize that not everybody has that. So, we feel very fortunate, and we're glad that you chose us and we look forward to working with everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else with community participation? Seeing none. The next item is consent agenda. Do you have a motion?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I second. I thought you did.
All right. Sorry, my hearing's not real good. I apologize. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next is reports, superintendent report. Dr. Ballinger, I know it's your first day of work and your first day of meeting that night, so not real fair, but welcome aboard.
That's a perfect point. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I'd just like to say I've started by making connections in the central office over the past, well, day or two, and yeah, understanding the layout and roles and responsibilities within the central office and getting to know some great, wonderful people. I look forward to working with them then. And as we move forward, I will work on out into the schools and into the community. Although there are a few things that I can mention that we have coming up starting next week. Starting July 6th, we will start with our virtual summer school at the elementary and middle school. As you are aware, our high school has already started because they use Apex as a program to help in utilizing as far as moving students forward and recovery with summer school. Also, kindergarten in-person registration will start Monday at our elementary schools, and so that will capture a lot of those parents that maybe are a little reluctant to utilize the online format as far as enrolling their student, or maybe it's just new that they like that in-person and talking with the individual. So, you know, I plan on taking that time to kind of get out and visit some schools also during the kindergarten enrollment and starting to make connections there. We also have our athletic conditioning for all sports. Will start on Monday as well. So, moving forward, you know, there are some things that are in process. We will be working towards looking at our plan. We have been working on a letter and a possible survey that -- and a survey that we will share and send out to the community to answer some questions. So, we have some things in process that we'll continue to work on and move forward.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ballinger. Doctor.
Nothing really to add tonight except welcome, Dr. Ballinger, and thank you, Ms. Shepherd.
Mr. Wells.
How do I react, well, rounder? Thank you, Melody, for everything that you've done and that you will continue to do. You've done a fantastic job to throw some frontline emails, whatever you need. I'll leave my phone number, I'll leave my emails, and I'd be glad to meet with you at any time because your call is just, and I'll be more than happy to work with you.
Thanks. Bye, Mr. Wells.
Mr. Renaldi.
I agree with the last two board members that have spoken. I'll say the same thing. Welcome aboard, and we're glad you're here. And Ms. Shepherd, thank you, thank you, thank you so much. You had a good ride there and a lot of challenges, and you handled it pretty well. So, thank you very much. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Renaldi. Ms. Ballinger.
Well, I echo all the other comments. Welcome, Dr. Ballinger, and Mrs. Shepherd, Mr. Smith, Mr. Linsay. You all jumped on board when we gave you additional duties back in January, and you did a phenomenal job. Thank you. And I also want to thank our teachers and central office staff and all of our staff. We just sort of threw them in the wind, and they jumped right in and did what needed to be done, and I think we've recovered pretty well. And I'm looking forward to seeing what we're going to be doing this fall and how that's going to play out. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Ballinger. Tough group to follow right here. They've pretty much covered everything, so welcome. Thank you. Thank you, sir. And where's Buck? Mr. Smith, thank you. We appreciate it. Mr. Gurnett, thank you. Michael, thank you. As a group, you guys make it happen, and it's greatly appreciated by this group sitting up here because you make our life a whole lot easier. And that's what it's about. And Mr. Ballinger, I did not mean to leave you out. Our paperwork over there, it keeps us straight. A very valid point for us. Front Royal Unites, thank you very much. And Mr. Wells, as he said, we will work with you guys.
Thank you, sir.
All right? You're welcome. You're welcome. All right, moving on, action agenda. Approval of Dr. Brad Tripp's memorial scholarship. Mr. Smith.
Good evening. Welcome to Dr. Ballinger as well. Last couple of days, we've been able to work together, and those type of things, we look forward to. Very good relationship, and welcome to a new school year, to our board, and to all of us. This evening, I have the privilege for a bittersweet presentation of a memorial scholarship to a person who, for the majority of us who've been around at any point in time, have had a lot of us have been impacted by Tripp Brad, Dr. Brad. I've known Dr. Brad actually 19 years ago today, the first day that I came. And I think on that day, maybe I think Dr. Brad was probably one of the very first people that I met. Unfortunately, recently, as we all know, that Dr. Brad passed, and that through that passing, obviously, it affected the lives of many people. And Jan and her family have -- and Tripp as well, constantly bragged about, supported, and did everything for the school division on the level of a doctor and a friend and a colleague. I'd like to read a little write-up that Alan Fox had put together, and then I'd like to bring Jan up to be able to speak on behalf of the family before then I turn over to this board to accept the scholarship for our students in the future. Dr. Tripp Brad worked in the emergency rooms throughout North Carolina. He came to Front Royal in 1984 and joined Front Royal Family Practice, where he worked at Warren Memorial Hospital's emergency room for two years. He missed family medicine and opened Skyline Family Practice in 1994. Dr. Brad was our team physician for our athletic programs, both Skyline and Warren. Since 1986, he started on the Skyline for Warren, and then often did as much double duty as he could for both schools, which we were very gracious and appreciative. Just being a former athletic director and a coach, to be able to have a physician with his talent on the sideline really made you feel much better about the safety of your other students or your student athletes. He was the original coordinator of the county wide athletic sports physicals. He was an athlete and swam in Chesapeake Bay Swim and Potomac River Swim for many years. He also competed in multiple triathlons. The scholarship would be the Dr. Tripp Brad Memorial Scholarship. It would be named in the memory of Tripp. Scholarship will be one for Warren County High School student, male or female, and one for Skyline High School, male or female. The scholarships will begin in the 2021 graduating class. The amount to be determined and the longevity of the scholarship will be determined. The criteria for the scholarship, students to be accepted into a two- or four-year college, student athlete, and they're going into the healthcare profession. The family will use our generic, our scholarship forms that we have throughout our guidance and online, and they will seek the assistance of the school counselors, and then ultimately as a family make the decision. They are taking donations toward the scholarship, to the scholarship fund, and that would be mailed, and perhaps Jan could speak a little bit on that here just briefly. So, I split with Jan this afternoon and asked her if she could just speak on behalf of the family and those type of things, and just asked if she was able just to share a few moments with us in regards to the scholarship and Tripp. Jan?
Thank you for your time and welcome. We've been in the area since, like Buck said, since 1984, and we just love the area. We've both been very involved with the school systems, with the athletics, and the scholarships will go to Warren County High School and Skyline High School, there'll be two, and we hope to continue those. Right now, we have received a good bit that's come in, and I don't know how we get it, but our mailing address, we're in Lake Frederick, Virginia now, on Cabbage White Drive, 127. So, if anyone wants to contribute, that's where it would go. And both my husband and I love Warren County. We made it our home after a lot of different moves and decided to stay here, and we're very involved with the schools. All four of our children graduated from here, have been very successful in life, and they have great schools here. We've been avid supporters through volunteering, like I said, like Buck had said, with my husband, with doing the athletic part. I was Athletic Association President, PDA President many times at schools, and we love the school system here. And he passed away very quickly. He only had a transplant two years prior to his passing away, but he was doing better, so this was unexpected. And I know that he can be very happy to know that we're doing this to honor one of our students here. And I appreciate your time, and thank you.
I just wanted to say, Mrs. Brad, she's walking back there. Jan, I just wanted to say, his education was phenomenal. We went to a lot of football games, always saw him there, and even saw him there this past fall, and I know he wasn't going well. He was acting, broke out late.
And he loved doing the -- he started all the sports physicals here, and all the money went back to the schools for everything and all the coordination. And our older daughter helped coordinate this with me through the hospital, and so it was a great service, and hopefully that will continue. Thank you.
Mr. Brad, before you go sit down. Hang tight, bear with us, okay? Mr. Wells.
Yeah, if you don't mind, Howard, I wrote this. Dr. Brad was a colleague at Warren Memorial, and I wrote this and sent it out, so I'd like to read it if I could. Dr. Floyd Brad III and did Tripp as he preferred was a man of integrity and service to the community. He was a friend and helper all we met. He was an athlete and a competitor throughout his life, and no matter how many times we joke him, he noted that he tried to kill himself through the bicycle accidents, the walker boots. He kept pushing himself to continue to compete and provide medical care to patients, and the only thing that could defeat him was his final illness. He was especially a supporter of current at Warren County Public Schools and in particular the sports programs. He could be found even in the midst of his illness on the sideline at football games whenever it was possible. He and his friend and colleague, Dr. Jim Fabro, who moved off seven years ago, were a fixture at both Warren County High School games, and when we created the two schools, he even recruited his partners with an understanding that they would share, one in Warren County and one in Skyline. Also forgotten sometimes that Dr. Brad, perhaps having been a celebrated college athlete himself, and knowing what opportunities athletics could provide students, was instrumental in convincing Warren Memorial Hospital, its administration, its employees, and its medical colleagues to provide athletic physicals collectively on a single day for our student athletes, to assure them the opportunity to participate, the coordination of which has moved on a generation to his daughter Kristen Roats, who oversees the logistics of this each year. He was also instrumental in pushing and assisting Warren County Public Schools in addressing concussion protocols and creating testing for such. All of these resulted in Dr. Brad being inducted into Warren County High School Sports Hall of Fame, but even that doesn't define fully the man he was. As a supporter and family-centered citizen, Dr. Brad made sure that he supported our schools, not only by volunteering and assisting where possible, but in sending his children to the Warren County Public Schools, where he and his wife Jan were advocates for our students and programs. Warren County Public Schools has lost a friend and a patron, and we send our warmest thoughts to Dr. Brad, to his family, and to his friends. And I found a quote that I tacked onto him later that I think sets him apart. Kindness is language which the deaf can hear and the blind can see. Mark Twain. And that is true.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're very special to him.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Any other comments? You have a motion?
I'll take a minute to review that. I move that we approve the scholarship for Dr. Tripp Brad, with great thanks to his family and to Dr. Brad for his service in Warren County and to the students at Warren County Public Schools.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Smith and Ms. Brad. Next is approval of Special Transportation Route Assistant, Mr. Smith and Mr. Mitchell.
Yeah, Mr. Mitchell is on a road or vacation for this week. He actually offered to drive back a few hours to be here, and I'll let the poll know that I will be the second string, and I'll kind of inform him here and do the best I can do. The Warren County Public Schools Transportation Department is responding to the needs of the division during the COVID-19 pandemic. In meeting the upcoming expectations of transporting students while utilizing social distancing and reorganizing staff to meet the needs to provide safe and efficient travel, we're requesting the approval of Special Transportation Route Assistant. Over the last five years, the Transportation Department has requested this position. However, due to budget, it has not survived the final cuts. However, under addition, I'm sorry, it has not survived the final cuts. Under our current pandemic, transporting our most medically vulnerable and fragile students will continue to grow. It's placed additional workloads on the department, making it challenging to perform their duties while also attending IEP meetings, coordinating special service routes, and accommodating additional daily changes as they arise. This position will bring the assistant department in covering 11-12-hour day of operation, which they're currently doing with a staff of three. In addition, this position has the endorsement of the Special Services Director and ensures consistent services with our most vulnerable population. When a child is assigned to receive special transportation through the IEP process, that assignment creates a new individual route, which requires constant attention to consistency. Consistency refers to pickup time, safe delivery of students to their educational facility, assignment of drivers, and the management of the ever-changing placement. This position will come at no additional cost. Funds for the position would be achieved within the transportation budget by reassigning several current vacant driving positions that had been available due to the reduction in the general routes and the implementation of our tier starting times dating back several years. It is recommended the position be posted on the administrative assistant scale. Advertisement for the position would be requested to begin as to assist with the demands of the upcoming school year. Attached is a job description for that. We do have a route coordinator, Mr. Bernard, and -- but the realization of some of this is that you have your general routes, and then you have your special transportation routes, and those special transportation routes take all different directions. We're sending people down to Stanton. We're also sending them some last year to some place in, I think it's Berkeley, West Virginia, or Springs. We also have some to go down to Nassis. We also trade with other school divisions to meet them halfway, and we actually transport some of their students to the facility that their both schools would be going to. Normally, when a child receives special services, obviously, as a parent and those type of things, you by nature are going to be over-conservative and concerned. And we have had multiple situations over the last year or so where there has been just a lot of communication issues between our division and that particular facility. And it just -- and those students, if those students are late, or just imagine if you have a child that has that type of special needs for that child not to get home on the assigned time, it creates a lot of stress. And the -- within the Transportation Department, they have been covering this in-house, but I think with, over the years, Aaron has requested this position. We've used multiple avenues to try to cover this, but it seems like at the end of the day, we're always two steps behind where we need to be. And with the upcoming situation of transportation, we feel that now we'll be able to talk as far as the use of this to be able to implement this position.
Just one question, Mr. Hertz. The new, I'm not sure what term you use, the new setup for going in concert with Fox Year, is that going to create more routes or additional routes of any kind?
No, Mr. Wells. One of the main driving forces for this position in addition to supporting students with disabilities is with the McKinney-Vento Act, we have a large number of students that are transient, which is another word for their experience in temporary homelessness. And what we do is we try to keep students in the school division where they started the year. One last transition, one last school transition in addition to home and the other traumatizing kinds of things that go on is beneficial for the student. So, we're actually working with divisions around us that provide transportation to Page, to Fox Year, to Winchester, Shenandoah, and to all those counties, and working with those counties to make sure the students have one last transition. And that's really been the piece that has -- that has made us a little bit, and that's kind of where this is.
Yeah, it's a special, I'll go ahead and nudge, but it's a special service that, you know, is different than like you said at the beginning, general routes. It's one thing, special routes is another, and they're constantly changing.
And when you're also part of a, as a former special ed teacher, when you're putting together your IEP and you know you're going to have to have special transportation in that, you need to be able to include the Transportation Department or a representative or someone there within that IEP meeting. And to be able to do that, it's all about, you have to be able to build relationships. That IEP meeting is just more than paperwork and making sure that someone's got a particular placement. It's also an opportunity to build a relationship. That child has to be comfortable, the parent has to be comfortable knowing that my child's going to be picked up at a certain time and taken to a certain location and those type of things, whether it's the high school or whether it's another facility. So, the Transportation Department has to participate in these IEP meetings, and this person would be assigned to be able to go to those IEP meetings because currently now we're moving basically to Aaron and Tony basically to try to cover all those IEPs, and this person will be the person. And this person will be the person that will know exactly with the route, with the route software that we have, how those routes will run for those, for those students.
So, Mr. Smith, it sounds like we've grown to where it's becoming unmanageable with Aaron and his group are just kind of running in circles trying to make sure everybody's taking care of, it's creating a lot of headache and heartache that doesn't need to be?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anybody, anybody else have anything for Mr. Smith?
I, I look at this as a, really a proactive movement because I've sat in those IEP meetings and when you look at the parent, it's like they, they got, that's hard for them. You've seen it a lot. And so, you know, I look at this as stopping a catastrophe that could happen. So I would fully support it, Mr. Jan.
Okay. Thank you. Out of motion.
I move that the Warren County School Board approves the special, special transportation route assistant as presented.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
As opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Technology purchases over 15,000, Mr. Grant.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome, Dr. Ballinger. So Warren County Public Schools would like to purchase some computers for staff and student use. Most of these computers are smart board machines, classroom machines, those types of things. And then we have some tech PCs that need to be replaced. The computers will bid through our state contract, the VIDA, Virginia IT contract. And the funding for these computers will come out of the Warren County Public Schools' technology budget, which also includes funds from the FISA grant from the Virginia Public State Authority. The total cost of these PCs will be $45,348. And if you have any questions?
I don't have a question, I have a statement, I guess.
Okay.
Today, to see, got an email from Gina Patterson at the School Board, says, "The SBA is partnering with Byboard's National Purchasing Cooperative." So somehow there's a nonprofit purchasing cooperative set up, started in Texas and now it's kind of around the United States. I don't know if that's something we can look at.
Yeah, there's, there's several, so we look at all of them.
I'm sure you did.
Typically.
This is just hot off the press.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, if you'd send that to me.
Oh, take a light minute, certainly. Sorry, I had to pull it out from my phone. I'll send it right to you. All right. I don't have anything else. Any questions for Mr. Grant? You have a motion?
I move that the approval be given to purchase cell computers not to exceed the amount of $45,348.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
As opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Grant. Next item, approval of community eligible provisions, CEP, Reston Jeffries Elementary School. Ms. Shepherd.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would like to thank you guys for the opportunity to serve as the interim superintendent over the last seven months. It was my pleasure to serve the students and the families and the school board and Warren County. And I would like to welcome Dr. Ballinger, he's the creative addition to our team and I'm looking forward to working with him. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Virginia Department of Education has identified Reston Jeffries Elementary School as eligible for the Community Eligibility Provision, CEP. CEP is a part of the Healthy, Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010 and provides breakfast and lunch at no charge to all students enrolled at the school eligible for CEP. Federal funds are used to support this program. Reston Jeffries Elementary School has been approved by the Virginia Department of Education to receive funding for a four-year cycle. Do you have any answer any questions?
I think it's great.
This is our second school.
Yes, Ewels Marsen is in her third year of eligibility and I anticipate that they will be eligible again once they're four years in time.
Any votes? You have a motion?
I move approval be given for Reston Jeffries Elementary School to participate in the Community Eligibility Provisions Program in which all students who attend Reston Jeffries Elementary School are eligible to receive breakfast and lunch at no charge.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, hearing none, motion carries. Ms. Shepherd, once again, approval of May 2020, SBA School Board Policy Updates.
Thank you. In May 2020, SBA submitted 39 policies for consideration by the Warren County School Board. A chart showing the updated policies has been prepared by staff members noting the proposed changes. An additional set on policies are presented for review that have no recommended revisions. The first reading of the proposed changes was June 3rd. The second reading and discussion was at the June 17th work session. Recommendation for approval is tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions on the policy updates.
I think we've got plenty of time to review them.
It's been a year.
I know.
They come so often, there's always updates.
I know, we need to approve for it.
Any questions for Ms. Shepherd? I have none. You have a motion?
I move the May 2020, SBA policy updates be approved for inclusion in the Warren County Public Schools Policy Manual as recommended by staff.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, hearing none, motion carries. Approval of SBA Policy Services Agreement. Ms. Shepherd?
So this relates to the last item. For many years, Warren County School Board has subscribed to the Virginia School Board's Association Policy Services at an annual cost of $3,000. SBA provides the following services, a manual containing sample policies, updated services including but not limited to, numeric based sample policies based on statutory law, case law, agency rules and regulations, attorney general opinions, availability of the SBA staff member attorney to answer questions regarding policies. It's recommended that this valuable service be continued. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
I read that it hadn't changed in seven years, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I think it's invaluable just simply because what an attorney would cost us to have to ask those questions? We'd spend $3,000 rather quickly. Real quick.
I just realized that you have to have a policy for something after 44 years of writing policies and like get caught off guard because they don't really have a policy for that. It's, it's invaluable that they keep up with it and keep it standardized for the, for the school systems.
Correct. You have a motion?
I move the pose of SBA Policy Services Agreement, covered in the period of August 4th to the 2020 to July 34th, 2021, and the cost of $3,000 be approved and the School Board Chairman be authorized to sign the agreement.
All those, hold on a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
As opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Approval of Change Order Number 4, or 004 as written, for replacement of windows, marker boards and roller shades for AS Roads Elementary School renovation project. Ms. Shepherd?
Thank you. November 19th, 2019, Warren County School Board approved award of the AS Roads Elementary School renovation project to Lance Construction Company of Winchester. On May 19th, 2020, the Warren County Board of Supervisors approved appropriating $176,200 to Warren County Public Schools from the 2018-2019 surplus for the completion of the AS Roads renovation project. With the additional funds available from the allocation of the 2018-19 surplus funds, we would like to recommend approval to authorize LCW to provide and install windows, marker boards, tack boards and roller shades. These items were included in the May 6th, 2020 request from the School Board to the Board of Supervisors for the appropriation of the 2018-19 surplus funds. The window replacement was included in the original bid as alternate number six for the replacement of exterior windows in the amount of $240,300 and value engineered item number 23, fiber cement window vanvils in the amount of $30,000 for a total of $270,300. The total cost included in the change order to replace the windows is $271,100, which is a slight increase of $800. The marker board and tack boards were value engineered number 18 in the amount of $26,000. The cost to include the marker boards and tack boards is $23,000 for a savings of $3,000 from the original price. The roller shades were value engineered item number 19 in the amount of $16,000. The cost to include the window treatments into the project is $16,000. The recommendation is to approve change order 004 for the amount of $310,100 to authorize Lance Construction of Winchester to provide install windows, marker boards, tack boards and roller shades at AS Roads Elementary School. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have anything from Ms. Shepherd?
No.
Just have a comment, maybe a question, maybe both. This school's moving along rather quickly and it's good, but you know what? We don't share those pictures like, could we have like from before and after, maybe at our next meeting, then we could show up here and people that are here can see, wow, that's what it looked like and now it's here, so, because it is.
Yep, the construction is amazing and it's taking off very rapidly. I think the anticipated completion is December.
Total completion, yes, for both phases, early to mid-November is what we're looking at.
Really?
Total completion now, phase one.
Right.
Which encompasses the original school, four classrooms, cafeteria, main office, clinic.
Yeah.
Tentative completion, that is August 11th.
Okay.
Now, I will say, look, that's a critical path to get to that August 11th date is the receipt and installation of the main mechanical systems. Rooftop package units and all the new electrical components, new switchboard panels, et cetera. And we are looking mid to late July before that hits the doctor. The good news to them is getting daily updates, so neither factory has come back to LCW and said, by the way, now you're going to have a delay, the longer they've been ordered, you know.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, so each passing day, we don't get a notice about a delay. We feel comfortable it's going to get here on that mid-July time.
LCW is also looking at an extended period of time to install the windows, so we may see them later, as late as next summer, but they're looking for a time that they can get in and have a couple of weeks to do the work, so.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
I mean, so they carry it out, put it in and not disturb the students.
And not pay the premium.
Right.
Accelerate it. You don't have to go and need kids to ride for hours.
Yeah, I, I agree 100% of that. Okay, thank you.
I just, like I did with the other change orders, I want to thank Board Supervisors for providing the money for this and also to LCW for being a good partner and not, you know, the prices not going up too greatly between when we originally put it on hold and when we turned it loose, so it's, it's a good, good thing all the way around.
I agree, Mr. Wells. Anything else? Do we have a motion?
I move approval be given for the superintendent to sign change order number 004 in the amount of $310,100 to authorize Lance Construction of Winchester Incorporated to provide and install windows, marker boards, tack boards and roller shades at AS Roads Elementary School.
All those in favor?
Aye.
As opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. Next item, request to schedule special School Board meeting from Wednesday, July 22nd, 2020. Dr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Fifteen days before the opening of school, school divisions are required to upload their instructional plans. And our instructional plan was not ready to present tonight, so we need to have that ready for you to, to review and to approve before the first day of school. And so this meeting will be looking at our instructional plan and reviewing that with a possible calendar.
Okay. Questions for Dr. Ballinger on that?
Anybody else for this night?
Everybody good to leave?
Sure. Is it work day? That's your birthday?
That's your birthday?
Well, make sure you bring a cake.
We can't have a meeting.
Bring a cake to share.
No, we're good.
Yeah, bring it to everyone.
I'm trying to forget them.
Trying to forget them.
Yeah.
I did. All right. Do we have a motion there?
I move that a special meeting for Warren County School Board be scheduled for Wednesday, July 22nd, 2020 at 5:00 p.m. in the Diversified Arms Meeting Room located at 465 West 15th Street in Monroe, Virginia.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
As opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Best entrance for that is around the side, Ms. Shepherd, to get into 15th Street School.
It's around the right, yeah. North side?
North. I could go on the left.
I could go on the left. Okay, all right. I know where that's at. Okay, all right, thank you. All right. Anything else? Hearing nothing, meeting adjourned.